God's allegiance led by Councilman Clarence Warner.
God's allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as always, as pastor of Grace Church here in this community, I want to say thank you for what you folks do for us, for our community, and we appreciate it very much. And I appreciate the opportunity to be able to be here and pray for you. And so if you'd allow me to do that, I would greatly appreciate that. Father God, we thank you for this opportunity and this day that we have to be able to be here and to exist in this community and be a part of this great family that is Connersville in Fayette County. God, I pray that you will bless each and every resident. God, I pray that you will encourage and strengthen us for the journey that we're on. And Lord, for these council members, God, I pray that you will strengthen them with good health for them and for their families, with wisdom to be able to lead and guide our community in the ways that you would have us go. And so, God, I pray exactly for that, them tonight, not only tonight, but also into the future. Pray that you'll bless this meeting, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you so much. God bless you.
Thank you.
I'd like to say too that we keep Councilman Bill Gray in our prayers. He's been ill recently, so bat him to your...
Thank you.
Do you know how he's doing?
I don't.
I'm breathing.
Okay, if you'd like to welcome anyone, please make sure your ringers are on vibrate mode or off, and we'll begin with roll call.
Councilman Phillips?
Present.
Councilman Rob?
Present.
Councilman Gray? Councilman Nutty? Councilman Warner?
Here.
Councilman Barrett?
Present.
Councilman Williams, Jr.?
Present.
We have a little for Quorum. Everyone has their minutes from the May 3, 2021 regular meetings. Are any additions or corrections to that? If not, entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item A will be on hold. We're still waiting on the county to make their decision before we move forward with zoning ordinance. So I encourage you, if you still have questions, to get with Bill from the APC, and he can answer any questions. Item B, the approval pending ordinance 3654, addition of handicap. You're over here. Thank you, sir.
We have a letter from a doctor requesting permission for a disabled parking sign located on the side of a residence. Should I have that, copy the letter in your packet? Any questions on that?
Is this for him?
This is for her, for the female that's listed here.
Any other questions? If not, entertain a motion to approve pending ordinance 3654 on first reading.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And a motion for third and final reading.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Item C and D, Rosemary, you want to talk about those?
On these two ordinances, we had an error on the beginning of the year ordinances, where we had the HRA divided in two different amounts, and it's actually one amount for the entire year. So that's why we're modifying or amending the two utility salary ordinances.
For the public, what is HRA?
Their health savings account.
Any questions? If not, entertain a motion to approve pending ordinance 3649 and 3655 on first reading.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And a motion for third and final reading.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
If we could take E, F, G, J, K, and L together.
E, F, G...
Please.
E, F, G, K, and...
No, E, E, F, G, and J, K, and L.
Okay.
Resolution 2021-42 is a resolution to reimburse fire minor equipment in the amount of $4,000. Resolution 2021-43 is a resolution to reimburse riverboat sidewalk appropriation in the amount of $3,624.16. Resolution 2021-44 is a resolution to transfer $50,000 from general into the rainy day fund. Resolution 2021-45 is a resolution to reimburse $500 into the police to all fund. Resolution 2021-45, I'm sorry, 46 is a resolution to reimburse $150 into DOT garage and motor supplies. Resolution 2021-47 is a resolution to reimburse $3,508.56 into DOT other contractual services.
Okay, any questions?
I move we pass resolutions 2021-42, 43, 44, 45, 46, and 47.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, item H, approval pending order 3656, approval of the Fire Department Union contract. Thank everyone, we received, you received the arbitration hearing on that, and that is lining up with what was determined as arbitration. Any questions? If not, we entertain a motion to approve pending orders 3656.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Have a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And a motion for third and final reading.
Motion.
We have a motion and a... Second? Did you second, sir? I didn't hear, did you? Okay, I couldn't hear you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. I thought you did, but I couldn't quite hear you. Okay, item I, approval pending ordinance 3657, the HRA fund, Rosemary?
This is establish a fund to manage the monies and the EBC HRA fund. The utilities insurance company is, we're switching the companies that's managing the HSA, so we have to establish a new fund for that.
Questions?
So it's just a change of the insurance companies?
It's not the insurance, it's the company that's managing the health savings account.
Change.
I move we pass pending ordinance 3657.
I have one other question. Is there any conflict with what we have now with this?
It's, the company that is managing that HSA for the Liberty Insurance is no longer going to do that.
Oh, okay.
So we had to find another company to do that. So it's gonna, actually, everybody that's on the utilities insurance will not be able to use their old card after end of May. Is that correct, Brad? And then by the middle of June, our new card should be up and going, and we will be able to transfer our balances on that old card to the new card.
I just want to make sure we didn't have any conflict.
We, that's, I'm not allowed.
Okay, we have a motion.
Motion.
And a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Very much.
That's the suspended rules.
That was pending ordinance, I'm sorry, I apologize. We have a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And a motion for third and final reading.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Phew, this is a tongue twister, right?
I know, I'm sorry.
Okay. Scott Jones?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I believe in your packet you should have a copy of proposed ordinance that I put together. I backed up Jeff. I gave Jeff the information. What it is basically is it gives my department the ability to enforce the fire code when we do inspections. We're going to get back to doing more annual inspections than what we've been able to do in the past. We currently have six inspectors, so we can spread out the inspections, and we can get around the places in the city a lot more than what we used to be able to. Currently, we don't have an ordinance that allows us to enforce or penalize if we have trouble with somebody, you know, provided by the code. We have an ordinance that adopts the fire code, but no way to enforce it. So I reached out to several departments and got copies of the ordinances that they had. I sent a copy to Jeff, and what you have in front of you is pretty consistent to most of the departments I reached out to. Currently, if I have an issue, a major issue, I have to reach out to the State Fire Marshal's office and ask them to come down to help if it's something major. But this just gives us the ability to, you know, handle things ourself if we have to.
Now, does this cover all buildings?
Commercial buildings.
Just commercial?
Yes.
And this is going to help your ISO?
Yes, it, like I said in the letter I gave you, ISO will be making a stop back to Connersville next spring, and inspections is one category that, you know, you receive points, you know, points for, you know, the amount, you know, the record keeping and all that stuff.
What is our classification now?
We're a four.
Four.
Yeah, we're not too far from being able to get to a three. The generators that we just had put in, had installed, that's going to help us out. And there's just some other things that we're looking at. Training records is a big one, another thing I'm looking at. But there's a lot of things that go into the, you know, your ISO classification.
Just for the public's information, that does make a difference to every person who has homeowner insurance and whatever.
Business insurance also.
Business insurance and residential, because the ISO code, the lower the code...
It affects how they rate insurance in the whole city.
Yes, the lower your premiums, yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions for Chief Jones? If not, entertain a motion to approve pending...
What does this advertise?
No, it's advertised. I need to advertise for it, sorry. Read that wrong, I was reading the next one down.
Yep.
So we need permission to advertise for a change in fire code. There we go.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Gee. There's a lot on this one. Item A, approval pending ordinance 3658, fire department salary ordinance, Rosemary?
With the contract that we approved in H, this is updating all of the rates, vacations, all the changes per that contract.
Questions? If not, we entertain a motion to approve pending orders 3658 on first reading.
Motion.
If a motion?
Second.
You hear a second, okay. Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And a motion for third and final reading.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Lot of motions tonight. Okay, resolution 2148 approving amendment to purchase and sell agreement, was that a casual RE? I know that title sounds like a lot, but it's not. Everyone received what was going on via email, and you received it in your packet. Since we are still having a lot of pending, I don't really want to go into a whole lot of detail other than this was the recommendation from the law firm to put us on a... Jeff, let's let you know that.
Yeah.
Go ahead. I'll make sure I get it right.
I think the recommendation's to move forward as it's been presented to you. I mean, that's the legal representation, recommendation, recommendation of this one. The mayor's correct, we don't want to go into too many details, because this could, I mean, this could be potential litigation in the future if anything happens.
It just puts us as a lien holder, we can say that.
Sure.
On the, on the title.
Yeah, sure.
That's the safest thing to say. So...
And I would, if any of you want to discuss this, you're welcome to get ahold of me privately, and I'll be happy to talk to you about it.
Yeah, we've been, this has been a long process. We have thoroughly vetted every angle possible.
Sure.
And we do have a very good legal team working on this, and Jeff's working with them very good, so... It's a good thing, but you have everything. If you have more questions, just sit down with us, we'll explain everything to you. But this is resolution 2021-48, approving amendment, I need to... Good night. My brain is Friday, and a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Phew, lot of motions. Okay, on down to department reports. Chief Hopefield?
All right, for the monthly report, another busy month. We had a little over a thousand incidents that we responded to. Citations, 42 were issued. Accidents, we had 41 non-fatal. We did have one fatal accident that we responded to in the city. Four injury accidents. We had 182 traffic stops. We had 118 arrests. Of those arrests, there was a lot that were, almost half of those were drug related or paraphernalia related. And that's pretty common. With your reports, we're going to try to start listing those monthly and giving some of that information out for the public, so they know what's going on as well. We did have over 300 hours of man-hours of training last month in weapons training, building entries, or some of the items. We have our body camera program. I know you guys have heard us talking about that. Joe Lissa was able to secure a grant for that, and we're still got that program, trying to get it off the ground. Should be in the final stages of that, hopefully going somewhere with the same.
I do like the expansion of your...
And if there's anything else you guys want added to that, let us know, and we'll be happy to add it in there as well.
Any questions for him? Nope, okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman.
John, you going to do yours tonight? I didn't know if you were going to do both tonight or not.
I'm very proud of this. I could get on, walk over here. Don't watch, John. For the monthly report, we did 10 hours, 47 minutes of meeting production, 10 hours, 4 minutes of original production. We're continuing with our, as mentioned earlier today, our live programming with the library in cooperation with them. And we are working on a new series that we're going to start doing during the summer in cooperation with our summer intern, who worked with him a ton yesterday as well. We'll be going out and kind of featuring city departments, letting people know what's going on and things. Kind of what the chief was just talking about, with the group, we'll feature some of what they do, get that information out to the public then. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Chief Harden?
Good evening. Should have a copy of my report, the standards, but still recruiting, sort of full-time permanent spots, have two open. It's on page two, well, mine is page two, I'm not sure where it fell in order, but I did include a copy of the advertisement that we've been putting out. It's been on, indeed, it's been on Facebook, it's been on sponsored Facebook. There's a lot of different sites that you can post your jobs to on public safety type forums. It's been on that, it's also on the Department of Homeland Security website. One of the kind of no news is good news is we still haven't heard anything from AFG, which is good news, because they kick, it's, the longer you stay in, the better chances you have. Last year, we just long since been eliminated. So the fact that we haven't heard anything is actually a good sign. So, kind of weird, but that is, that's the way it is right now. I did, on the very back, once again, I guess it depends on how it's put together. I was just kind of coming through the CAD, which is a computer aided dispatch program, and it goes back to 1995. And so I put those numbers in there, a little chart, the 1995 average, 5.64 calls per day. We're up over 12 now, and that's an average. I work Saturday, we're 22, 23 at the end of the show. So that's, that's, that's really busy for us. Zima, have any questions on that portion?
No, you're still on transports.
Yeah, on that, on that chart, on that, let's see, I do a 13-month review, shows how many over the last 13 months, each month, and kind of being able to trend it. So in April, we were at 92. We usually stay between 92 and 100, depending on the month. And then the averages per month, some months are busier than others. February and December are always historically low. So you can see that, you know, December, we average 87 transfers in a month, and that's just, that's kind of what we've come to expect. It's low, nobody wants to be admitted during the holidays, you know, it all comes into play. February, I think February, you see such a dip, because you have fewer days. Two to three fewer days.
Thank you.
So yes, that is, you know, that's a, that's basically a hundred calls a month, right there, is the hospital, hospital transfer.
I handed out a little thing here tonight, could look down about the last, last quarter of it, about 75% the way down. It's not very often I can share stuff because of privacy concerns. This was something that was shared publicly, and it was shared and brought to our attention, so I sent it, and wanted to give you a copy, that we did have this accident, and we had two crews respond, it was out in the county, for assistance. And this was what was shared with us, that looks like everything kind of ended up working out okay. So I was very glad to be able to share this with you. The other, the other kind of neat thing, I guess, from here was we just, in the last two weeks, we finished PHTLS, which is an internationally accredited trauma program, trauma course, it's two days. We have to have staff like come in and teach us, it's part of our community outreach. So the fact that we were able to have kind of a good outcome, less than two weeks after this course, was just kind of, I don't know if it was how you'd want to phrase it, but it was kind of neat that, you know, there's a lot of time spent on spinal trauma, and then to have something come along where we got to use that training real, real quick thereafter. So, so that was kind of neat, I thought. And then the last page is just a little bit of history about EMS, about Fayette County EMS. This is EMS week, so just kind of throw this out, that Fayette County EMS has been around for 65 years, since 1956. We were established before the federal or the state government got around to implementing EMS. The, on the federal level, it didn't even come into picture until 1966, and the state didn't adopt it until 1974. So we were nearly 20 years ahead of our time. So I think that says a lot for the community. A lot has changed, lots taste the same, but we're still here for, for the community. That's our main focus. That's about where the similarities end. Amount of information and the amount of knowledge in the medical field doubles so fast nowadays that it's just a constant, I wouldn't say battle, but it is, to keep up with the latest and what is, what is good and what is bad. So that's something that we constantly work for. Zima, have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine?
Hi. I just want to highlight a few things on our monthly report this time. The pool is filled up as of today, so we're getting ready to open on May 29. And I did want to tell you a couple things that we're starting here, a few complaints about in Roberts Park, just wanted to explain a few of those. The column that was knocked down a few weeks ago, as you come in off the 28th Street entrance, and it's got the barricades around it, we're working with insurance and contractors on getting that done. We haven't forgotten about it, that's why it's still laying there. The Kittyland Playground, we have not put mulch over there, because the west border is falling over, and we want to fix it before we spend a bunch of money on playground mulch and put it in there and can't get it fixed. The other thing is new, there is a grass area right beside the pool, where lots of people like to park during the summertime to get their cars out of the sun and under those trees for shade. You're not really supposed to park on the grass because ordinances, but we don't really police that. But since this golf course got installed, there is a basket and a tee pad now in that area. So we have already installed the posts all the way around there, and we're going to put cable, so there will be no parking in that area. It will be blocked off, so if people wonder why we did that, it's because this golf is there. You're not supposed to do it anyway, so just trying to keep those cars out. I did include some updates on Second Street Park in your packet. John's got it pulled up there on the screen, too. This is where we have come to as of a couple weeks ago with REA. That is the architect landscaping firm that we've been working with. This is where we've gotten to as far, this matches our budget, as well as the community feedback we got for this park. One of the things that was very important was that this park be a gathering place for those people who work downtown, live downtown. So a shelter was very important at this park, as well as nature play, which is something that's getting very popular in the park world. And if you go a couple, the next page in your packet there, I think, shows you some examples of what nature play means. It utilizes lots of timbers, which we have lots of those, incorporates play equipment into the landscape. So like this little rectangle here, this is actually a slide that's incorporated into a mound that they're going to build up, so they're actually going to make us a hill to put a slide down. And then these here are actually those timbers that you could have kids play on. This here is a walking track. That's another thing, we got a lot of feedback from that neighborhood and the surrounding community was a place to walk. So that park is finally starting to take shape, and we should hear next Friday. I think you all got a link to our grant presentation, if you had a chance to watch it. We worked hard on that. And we should hear next Friday, if by chance we got chosen for that grant opportunity. Did anybody have any questions about what you were looking at on Second Street? The other thing I included in your packet was a picture of Cleo Fountain. A neatly trimmed landscape is going to be revamping the area around the fountain there with river rock, some different plantings, to make that area look nicer. We actually get an endowment payout every year from the community foundation. Father Mizola, who used to be at St. Gabriel, left some money to the foundation to help maintain the fountain area, and that's how we're going to pay for that project, so we're thankful for that money. We did have opening day at Babe Ruth on May 1st. I think it went really well. We did have our first movie in the park that night. I think we had about 50 people come out. Our next movie is June 4th, first Friday night in June. We'll have movies every Friday night in June. We'll have movies every Friday night in June. Our sponsor that night is the library, so...
Do you know what that movie's gonna be?
It's called "An American Tale" because the library's summer program is called Tales and Tales, so stories and animal tales. So we thought that fit pretty well. It's like from 1983, but... It's a good movie, it's bi-ful, I don't know if you remember it.
Where's it gonna be in the park?
Roberts Park.
I mean, is...
We're probably gonna have to tie the screen up to the old frame, so it'll be right where that old frame is, and then people are probably gonna sit out in the midway. We'll have the concession, well, no, we won't have concession trailer out that night, it'll be down at Baseball. Let's see. Oh, and then John has our, our last two billboards went up a few days ago. This one is as you come into town on 44. If you're coming home from Liberty or Richmond, you'll see that one. And those are all local kids, we took that picture last summer. Their parents were excited to see them. Do you have the other one on there, too? And then this one is out as you come home from Everton with the pool. So we thought that would be nice with Brookville's new pool, we would just remind people we have a pool, too.
I love the billboards, I think they're fantastic.
And the other one right next to it hasn't been purchased yet, so our other one about the Miller Building is still up, so they're kind of fun. I hope they bring more people to the park. I think that's it for me, if there should be some questions.
I don't have a question, but I would like to say, as you mentioned, disc golf, that's really a success. I've been at the park, every time I'm at the park, there are multiple people playing that. I mean, it is absolutely a success.
It's busy all day long. Oh, I would like to say, I don't know who's doing it out there, but please stop taking equipment from the maintenance garage. We've had three times people have taken ladders, just walked up, taken ladders from the garage. One was left out by the bridge. It's very dangerous, the kids could have climbed that ladder and fell off. So luckily Randall noticed it and went and got it. But they lose their frisbee, or their discs, on rooftops, and the equipment is not for the public to go and use, you can't be touching the equipment over there, so. But yes, it is very popular.
Any other questions? Thank you.
I'd like to, sorry, but I would like to mention, this is just not, it's on the billboards, the tourism board did participate in paying for those. Also, I guess this goes along with, but there are going to be new maps, new Union County, Fayette County maps that were just printed, so I think we just got them today. And they'll be around, so if you haven't gotten a new map, that was also paid for by the tourism board, Fayette County Tourism Board. We are alive and well.
Chief Jones.
Hello again. Everybody should have a copy of my report in your packets. We'll start with the overtime. Overtime looks a little high, a little deceiving, it was a three-pay month in April, so that's why it looks a little bit high for the month of April. Any questions on the overtime before I move on? Moving on to the monthly run report for the month of April, we had 121 runs, down a little bit compared to the previous months. 79% of those are EMS runs, 21% are fire runs. And if you look a little back, you can see a huge category for the runs that we had for the month of April. After that, you'll see a list of our training for the month of April. Training was down a little bit in April because it's April, we do spring cleaning, so the last two weeks of the month, the guys clean the stations real well. So that's why training looks a little bit down from pretty previous months also. And then on the last page, you'll see the inspections that were done in April also. Right now, the only inspections that I'm currently doing are either requests or and/or complaints until we get our annual inspection program kind of going. I still have to do some training with the new inspectors and the new software. But right now, I'm just doing complaints or annual things we stumble upon, so. That's all I have.
Any questions? Any questions? Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mike, you up first?
Good evening. Should have received a copy of my April report, attached in our revenue disbursements for the month of April. Nothing out of ordinary. You've pretty much seen this report before. Also attached is the overtime report. We had $4,074 in overtime, and 22% of that was scheduled overtime. So overtime is fairly good this last month. Projects and miscellaneous. We had to replace the VFDs controls on Park Road booster station for $2,500. The reason why I'm telling you this is because it's part of the claims that you come across. It's not an ordinary claim, so I try to highlight those non-ordinary claims. It was started by lightning. We updated our monitoring system for select few lift stations, that was $4,800. Our water main project is doing pretty well up on 10th Street. We got a few more weeks. When that is completed, then they will ship over to EV Drive to start that part. We also bought a new lateral camera for the sewer department, which was $3,800. And this will be, we'll get into the small lines that we have. We also had our annual bio test, sounds kind of fancy word, but it's testing our fluid water at the sewer plant, and basically it's making sure that our water is good for the aquatics in the river. And it passed, and that was $2,200 to have that tested. Lastly, we received our second shipment of water meters, 500 of them. And this is part of our water meter replacement program. We have over 6,000 meters, and we put 500 in the last few months, and we'll be putting another 500 in as soon as possible, probably this week sometime, we'll start doing that. When that's completed, then we'll order another 500. So I think that's all I have. Is there any questions?
Nope. Thank you, sir. I talked to you last month about the headworks project at the waste water plant, just want to kind of keep you guys informed. The water works okay, $180,000 in engineering today, approximately. That gets us started, and that'll help get us through the next four or five months of the PER report, and then we'll get into the final engineering, which will be several, several more hundred thousands of dollars to get that thing engineered and get ready to start it this time next year. So sometime in June, or maybe possibly the first meeting in July, somebody from Strain's gonna kind of make a good presentation on this. We have to have a public meeting at a certain point in that SRF process, so when we do that, we'll have them give a good report to you about what this is gonna be.
You did say that some of those costs will be reimbursable by grants?
Yeah. Well, the reason that we got into this so quickly is so we would have a possibility, the IFA has about $200 million in money that is, we just found out is gonna be given in grants, so we're... We may get zilch. There'll be shovel raid projects, too. That's why we're pushing for this. Yep, so there's no guarantees, but we sure hope that we're getting ourselves in a position to have a good shot, at least. But this project is looking, they priced it at about 17 million, I think they are doing that to try to cover all these inflationary rates that we're going through right now. Hopefully, it'll come in closer to 15. But we'll get you a good report at a council meeting sometime in the next couple of meetings. Also, I wanted to tell you, the street department, you can see the street department transfer station report. The street department, I wanted to remind everybody that the compost site is open all week except for Fridays right now in May, so that people can pick up mulch, compost, and drop off limbs. At the end, at the beginning of June, we'll go back to regular hours, which will likely be open on Wednesdays and Saturdays again. I reminded everybody today about the heavy trash, one item that you can call in and picking up yard waste. Keep that graphic up or whatever you made. We got, I wanted to report to you, there's a new program that is part of the ARP finance money that came from the federal government that is gonna help with emergency rent assistance. This assistance is for landlords and renters. And hopefully it'll show on the screen, but if you go to indiana housing now.org, it will walk you through the process. If you've lost any income due to COVID or this past year because you lost your job, there's money that will help with utility bills, electric, gas, and water, sewer and trash, home energy, it can help you with your rent. If you're a landlord, if you've been left in the works by a renter, this can help you on that end, too. So go to indiana housing now.org, and this is gonna be a big, this is gonna be a big help. We've got quite a few people that have carried past due balances most of last year and have a hard time getting caught up because they weren't working, and this hopefully will help them.
Brad, is there anybody that could help people fill this out?
At our place?
Not at your place, but anywhere?
Well, if you call, you can either get on this website, and I guess it walks you through the process, but if you don't have internet or don't do that, you can call that 211 number and tell them what you're looking for, and they can help you, and they walk you through the application.
Is the possibility to the library has computers and internet available if you can, you can go down and use that thing?
I think you're gonna be, from what everybody says, this website is gonna be all over the place, they're really gonna be pushing this advertising, they have many millions of dollars to help people with, so just wanted to bring that up while everybody knows. Did anybody have any questions about the...
Can I say something about the outlets that we're going through? Saturday, stopped at the farmer's market, we had a nice little print on the corner. So I have an idea, because we have the ability on those outlets in the sitting parking lot, they can be shut off if we're not having an event there. Personally, I think they need to be shut off so that people aren't using the electricity that we're paying for, but I think it would also curb those people that want to stand on the corner during events, that I don't feel like we need to have people on the corner when we have visitors in town. That's my opinion, but I think that we need to look into shutting the outlets, the power to the outlets off until we have an event there.
Or at least they won't be using our power to do it.
Right. So for, obviously this Friday for the event, you would have them turn on, for the farmer's market, you would have them turn on, otherwise the power's shut down.
I don't know if it'd be that easy, would it?
For some reason, I think it is. But I think you're shutting them all off or turning them all on, and I don't think you can power down... It's a certain area. You'd lose the lights at night. We don't, we would lose... I forget if there are covers made that would cover those?
There's locking covers, but I don't know what kind of...
That was my other thought, was to get the covers and put locks on them.
I've been researching different ideas for that as well, because it is, needs to be protected at the same time. They're just open for use, and that's not the way that should be. I was looking at different ideas, but I want to make sure we keep the lights on at night. I guess everybody saw, I'll just tell you that we were expecting 400 block of Central to close this morning, but because of the rain, that's probably delayed a day or two. So sometime this week, that block will close and be closed for three or four weeks while they work on it. And as you can see, just to the people out there, just be careful driving downtown because they're working in all areas between 3rd and 9th right now, getting the light poles out. So just look out for those guys and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to old business, is there any old business? All right, well, we want to miscellaneous, I have a couple things here we need to deal with. Need to, I have an appointment to make for passing a gene, we need to fill his spot on the airport board, and it's going to be Lonny Scott, will be my appointment to the airport board. So he will be effective for, what's the next meeting? I just lost it.
24th.
24th will be his first meeting, so just so everyone knows, Lonny Scott will be fulfilling Gene's role on the airport board. Also, I need to make an EDG appointment from the council, that's gonna be a council call, so I'll open the floor up to anyone who is interested in fulfilling the EDG council appointment
Could I nominate Diana Phillips?
Yes, you may. Any other nominations? If not, I'll close the floor for appointments, and no reason to vote, because you're only one, so. You're it.
Okay.
So we'll make contact to the EDG and make sure you're on the next communication call. Any other miscellaneous business? If not, Glenn, anyone out there? You're my go-to guy now, you always sit right where I can see you. I love it. So no one out there from the public, so if not, we'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion, and...
Second.
Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Excuse me, have a wonderful day, evening.